I would like to call to order the December fifteenth, twenty twenty, regular school board meeting of the Columbia Heights. Public School Board. If you are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get going, I would like to read a little statement. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota directive, presidents to stay home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID- nineteen coronavirus pandemic. This meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statute thirteen D point one or point zero zero two one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. Uh, school board members wishing to speak should raise their hands, uh, and then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which the board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone and speak and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded and access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Molly, would you do the roll call, please?
Thank you. Larkin. Palmer.
Here.
A Samurai.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Lewis, here. Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like we have a full house. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll move on to the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. First, move on to the approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
John, second?
I'll second.
Was that Holla?
Yes.
All right, Holla with the second. Any discussion on that? All right, we'll make it a roll call vote then, please, Molly. She's a celebrity now.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Larkin.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
A Samurai.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Severson.
Hi.
Lewis, hi.
There it is. Motion carries. Great. Nice comeback, Molly. All right, we'll move on to the announcements. Uh, December twenty-third through the first, there is no school for students. Uh, January fifth, uh, which is a Tuesday at five P M., we'll have our school board organizational meeting. Um, January twelfth, Tuesday at seven P M., we'll have a regular school board meeting, uh, in the community rooms and via electronic means. January eighteenth and nineteenth, there will be no school. And on January nineteenth, Tuesday, which is a Tuesday at five thirty, our school board work session will be in the community room and via electronic means. And on January sixteenth, which is also Tuesday, seven P M., we'll have another regular school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means. Uh, we'll move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenvik, do we have any correspondence today?
Chair Severson, members, there is no correspondence at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to communications to the board. Uh, the first will be citizens, employee representatives. And at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request the administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Superintendent Stenvik, I'm seeing you have no mask on, so I'm judging that no one else is in the room with you.
Correct. I'm in the room by myself.
All right. Okay. Um, and just as a reminder for people who are watching at home, we are more than happy to read emails or have conversations with you. We do want to hear from you on matters that are important to you. So feel free to reach out in other ways. I know the pandemic is making it tricky. We're not able to just see people as much. So we want to hear from you and communicate with you, or at least I do. And I'm assuming if I can get head nods from the rest of the board on that, I don't want to speak. We're getting some thumbs up. Yeah, um, feel free to email us and contact us that way. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report and minutes, uh, from, it looks like November tenth and twenty-fourth and November seventeenth and then on November twelfth canvassing meeting and the November twelve twenty-four special call meeting. Um, can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lauren, second?
Second.
Second from Laura. Any discussion on that? All right, Molly, please. Roll call.
Larkin.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
A Samurai.
Mute.
You're muted there? There she goes.
I thought I was.
Thank you, Holla.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Severson.
Hi.
Lewis, hi.
All right, motion carries. We will move on to, hold on, I need to go back to my agenda. Sorry, it's a little bit tedious. Uh, oh, this is a fun one. Acknowledgements of contributions. Um, I'll go ahead and I will read this, uh, motion. And then we can, uh, I'll ask for the motion and we'll go from there. Hold on, I need to make it larger. I was just saying that the board book defaults into the sixty percent of full size, the board book that I work from. And I needed to be about a hundred and twenty-five percent to read it. So every time. All right, acknowledgements of contributions. Whereas the Minnesota statute twenty-three B point zero two permits, or sorry, go ahead.
Do we need a motion to move it forward?
I was gonna read it and then ask for a motion.
I'm sorry.
Is that, is that?
I've done it.
I don't know if it's the other way typically or not. That's why I've been, I've been reading the motions before I ask for it to be approved.
Either way, it's fine, Natty.
Okay, great, thank you. Look at that. John, you're still useful, even in this, your last meeting. All right, keep going here. Acknowledgements of contributions resolution. Whereas Minnesota statute one twenty-three B zero point zero two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of districts, request donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In the behalf, the school board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District number thirteen, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of five hundred thirty-nine dollars. A detailed background of value and kindness. Donations of lacrosse sticks and balls were made to Valley View Elementary by U S Lacrosse for student needs estimated value of five hundred dollars. Donations of drawing race markers and pens was made to Valley View Elementary by Mark Emmy for student needs estimated value of thirty-nine dollars total fiscal year twenty 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 twenty-one monetary contributions to date. Sixty-two thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars and one cent. Now, I will ask for that motion. Can I get a motion to move this forward? I'm a, I'll give that one to Molly. Can I get a second?
Second.
John with the second. Discussion on this one. I will lead off by saying thank you. Uh, and I'm excited for the day when the students at Valley View can use those lacrosse balls and sticks. That will be fun to see again. So thank you for all the, the contributions. Anyone else? All right, Molly, can we get a motion, please? Or sorry, a roll call vote. There you go.
Larkin.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
A Samurai.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Severson.
Hi.
Lewis, hi.
All right, motion carries. Back to my board book. We'll move on to discussion reports, uh, and information items. And we'll start with reports from members of the board and for obvious reasons, which will be made clear later. We're gonna start with Mr. Larkin.
Keep it simple. Um, I have nothing to report.
All right, great. We will move on to Laura.
Okay, um, well, I did, uh, attend a couple of nine sixteen board meetings and, um, one was the executive committee or the search firm. And, uh, the other one, uh, was our regular scheduled, um, board meeting. Um, couple of items of note is, is that we did, um, appoint a superintendent search firm. And, um, and that is gonna be, uh, Ken La Croix, um, Educational Consulting Services. And we're looking at a timeline of March for hiring a superintendent. So that's very good. Um, seems like a really good timeline. So he's got some pretty good plans on how to deal with this, uh, uh, in a pandemic on being able to do all the interviews. Uh, the other thing was as well is we had an update on our Grow Your Own initiative. Um, we're now actually, um, partnering, partnering with, um, uh, where, let me see. I had it and then I got, the University of Saint Thomas. Um, we have two cohorts go, um, in training right now. And, um, actually, uh, it looks like five of our teachers or staff are actually participating in that. Um, so they will, um, be able to, uh, they will be able to, uh, get their, uh, teaching certificate and special education. So that's very exciting. Um, that is pretty much it. Um, and I think we did some sort of a special call meeting last week, if I remember correctly, on my off a week. It's been, it's been really, really busy this time of year.
We had a work session. We had a work session.
Yeah, work session. Yep. I did attend that. Okay.
Yep, that's it. Yep. So did John, for the record.
Yeah. But nothing to report.
Thank you, Laura. We'll move on to Holla.
Okay, so. I attended, um, the ARCC night at the high school, the academic lettering ceremony, the work session last week. Um, I've had many conversations with parents and students and, um, some emails from students too. And attended the community engagement subcommittee meeting right before this.
All right. Thanks, Holla. We'll move on to Lauren.
All right, good evening. Um, like Holla, I also attended the ARCC night and I attended the A P, um, info session at the high school. Um, last week I attended the chair meeting and the work session that followed. Um, I also had a conversation with Superintendent Stenvik. Um, I attended the community education, or excuse me, community engagement, um, subcommittee meeting, um, and the chair meeting prior to this meeting.
All right, thank you. Um, Molly.
Thanks. Um, I also attended the work session last week as well as the academic learning, lettering ceremony and a football banquet last night. Um, also took part in the community engagement, um, subcommittee meeting prior to this. And along with many of you, I've had several conversations with community members. Thanks, Natty.
Yeah, um, similar for me. I was able to attend the work session last week and then chair meetings prior to, uh, this meeting and the one last week. I was also able to have a brief phone conversation with Superintendent Stenvik um, and talked with, uh, various constituents in the community. Um, and was able to do a, now I might need your help with this Superintendent Stenvik. We had a uh, organizational meeting with a independent consultant, Dennis Cheesebro, to talk with our incoming board member, Mary Granland, um, about different board functions and the, the role of governance. So perhaps you will expand on that to help us out a little bit. But it was, it was, uh, good and it was a good reminder of, uh, all the things I learned when I did the same thing. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent update.
Yes, thank you. I also attended the new board member orientation training from Dennis Cheesebro and um, just I concur, it was a really great use of time and a great overview of the different roles that, um, that we all played. Um, each week I continue to meet with the Association of Metropolitan School District Superintendents, also our own admin team, and participate in the weekly Commissioner of Education phone calls. This is all part of this process that we're, you know, collectively mitigating the work of schools during a pandemic. Um, and I just want to say that the collaboration and support for one another across the metro area and also within our own district has been a highlight during this very difficult time. So, um, a lot of people stepping up and, and coming forward to collaborate and help one another. It's, it's heartwarming. Um, also I participated in the MSBA Phase Two Training, Part One. This week I'll finish up with Part Two. Um, and I had the opportunity to speak with Chair Severson, Member Mueller, and Member Larkin, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you so much. We will move on to Director Hennigens and the high school fax room bids.
Hey. Find the right screen to share. Okay. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, uh, this evening I have um, the presentation on the Columbia Heights High School Fax remodel. There we go. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Um, and our core values focused tonight on excellence, collaboration, and integrity. Uh, this is, um, not a governance, uh, presentation this evening. It's just an informational, uh, this presentation or this item will come to the board, uh, future board meeting, uh, for approval, the January twelfth regular board meeting. So, the fax room. Um, so majority of our fax room is original, um, original cabinetry and, and, uh, our casework and countertops, uh, pictured here. And, um, this is, um, so we have the, the back of the room, so the three, three main kitchens in the back, and then we have um, some kitchens on the sides. Um, these kitchens have ample storage, uh, and are well-designed kitchens for the, for the program. And then we have some kitchens that are more linear kitchens, not a lot of counter space. Um, so they're a little bit more difficult to work with, particularly considering the number of kids that are in each kitchen. Um, and then we have our nice little laundry area in the corner here. Um, so laundry obviously cannot be done during class. It has to be done um, before or after the school day, uh, because it's right inside the room. Um, this is just a closer look at one of the more ideal kitchens in the center of the room. And as you can kind of see in these pictures, um, you can see handles missing from the cabinets. Um, they're just, they're just really old. Um, so this is kind of a close up of some of it, delamination of the, the countertops, cabinets that won't close, handles that are broken. Um, it's, it's showing its age. Um, and I think I talked about this before when I was receiving the authorization to go out for bid. Our HVAC is undersized for that space, so keeping it cool when all the ovens are running is difficult, depending on the temperature outside. Um, and it's, it's just, you know, when we're running the kitchen, we're, we're circulating air, we're meeting I A Q. But we also have to remember that we're, we're putting in potentially items that may be burnt in the kitchen, um, sometimes. So um, we, we definitely are looking to increase that airflow to be able to support the, um, the cooking process. Vents will be implemented into it because that's now a code function. So this is kind of the current layout of the space. Uh, so you enter from the hallway at the top. And you can see that the blue and the green, so the green is, uh, the presenter station in the current room. Uh, and the table, this is how the tables are set up. So around these tables, um, in this space in the center, you're putting up to thirty-six kids, which is difficult. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six kitchens. Um, so we have seven, um, or eight potentially kids. Um, or seven kids, six to seven kids in a kitchen. And, um, and then we have the storage room back here and, um, that is primarily used by, uh, the fax room. And then we have this separate little storage area at the top. So that's the current floor plan. Uh, very difficult space as far as function and flow and as far as, um, the standard kitchen goes. Uh, three of the kitchens are very standard and then three of them are, are not. So this is what the, what we're planning on doing. Um, so increasing the size of the space, so consuming a big, uh, chunk of that storage room in, uh, in the back. Um, so we increase that space, uh, moving laundry back, um, to a new separate storage room. Um, and, and then creating more uniform kitchens, um, with one exception. So we have one, two, three kitchens, four, five, six, seven kitchens that are, are very similar. Um, and then we have one kitchen in the back that is that linear kitchen, um, and that is our ADA kitchen. Um, so in the current space, we're fitting seven tables. Um, we're increasing the space in the center. So now we have eight tables. And, um, just making for more ample space. So new appliances, new tables, um, really, really cleaning house on the space and, and making it a, a, a much more functional space for the program that we have. So, uh, we received bids, um, on the eighth. Um, construction results with the base bid of two hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, um, is the lowest responsible bidder. Um, so, um, this is just kind of a timeline. I kind of already said the eighth, the, uh, today on the fifteenth. Um, this is a, a recommendation. It's an informational item, um, that we'll be bringing forward at the next meeting at the January twelfth meeting. So construction would, would, uh, begin on June, in June, um, and then we would finish it up in August for um, hopefully a return of our full students, um, into the school. This is, um, a long-term facility maintenance project for the school district. This hall will be funded and it is budgeted for. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Brian. Questions? I'm trying to look for hands. We'll do the gallery view. All right, looks like we don't have any questions. Thank you so much, Director Hennigens. We'll see you back very shortly.
Yes.
All right, we are going to now move on to our district's annual budget hearing, uh, the truth and taxation hearing. And I would, uh, like to welcome, I think, Director Sunstrom. Is that, I'm not seeing who's leading this portion. Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can you see my screen?
No.
Oh, shoot. Okay. I'll go back to share screen. This happens all the time to me.
I think it happens to a lot of people. So, and the more pressure you feel, of course, the harder it is.
Well, yeah, it's kind of going.
There you go. We see it now. Right. We see it in presenter view, if that's okay with you.
I'm gonna go into presenter view here. Okay?
Yep.
Um, good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Welcome to the public meeting for taxes payable twenty twenty-one. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And tonight, we're gonna hit on the core values of community, excellence, collaboration, and integrity too, but it's not highlighted. Um, the agenda tonight is going to be a background on property tax levies, legislative changes that affect the twenty twenty-one levy, information on school current funding and district budget, proposed taxes payable in twenty twenty-one, estimated impact on taxpayers, how to get a property tax refund, and, um, public comments and questions. So a background on property tax levies. Um, truth and taxation is the law that we have to present this budget before we approve our levy each year. And in two thousand nine, the, the law was revised and it allowed us then to hold this, um, truth and taxation or budget meeting at a regularly planned school board meeting. So we don't have to have it separate. It used to be on a separate night. And that was the only agenda item. We have to discuss the proposed property tax levy for, and this year it's for taxes payable twenty twenty-one. The current year budget must be discussed. The levy may be adopted at the same meeting, which we will ask you to adopt in the next, after this. Um, and we must allow for public comment and question. Whoop, that one. So the levy cycle, um, it's the cities and the townships of the county and the school districts are the taxing jurisdictions and all of us are going through this at the same time, pretty much. Um, it's August through December each year that we, all of our, all of the jurisdictions decide what we can do, what we are, you know, what we're allowed to do for taxing. And then we, um, we levy the tax, we do the proposed tax in December, and that then is collected over the next calendar year. So it's collected from the taxpayers from January until December of twenty twenty-one. So that's the same for the city, township and county, and also the school district. We collect over the same period, the calendar year. The difference between school districts and the other taxing jurisdictions are that our budget year is on a fiscal year. It's, it goes July first to June thirtieth, as opposed to a calendar year. So when you, you know, the cities are on January to December, but that's the only difference. Otherwise, it's pretty close to the same, um, levy cycle, calendar. So the levy process, um, this is a background on how the taxes are, um, collected and how they're calculated. So it's, it's pretty exciting. So number one, the assessor determines the estimated property value and assigns a property tax to each parcel. And the county auditor calculates the net tax capacity for each parcel in the county as well as the total net tax capacity for each taxing jurisdiction. A property's net tax capacity is determined by multiplying the property's market value by the relevant class rate. Class rates are set by statute. They vary by property type and are uniform statewide. The local tax rate of a taxing jurisdiction is determined by dividing the jurisdiction's total levy by the jurisdiction's total net tax capacity. Each jurisdiction sets its own levy and follows specific limits set by state law. The county auditor divides the final levy by the district's net tax capacity to establish rates. The county auditor applies those rates to each parcel and prepares the final statements for mailing. The Minnesota Department of Education, M D E, sets the maximum let tax levy limit for each school district based on current legislation and formulas. The school district adopts the proposed levy in September, which you already did. We hold the public meeting, which is right now, and then finalize the levy amount in December. So those seven easy steps, that is the, gives us the authority for school levies. In a school district, tax levy must either be, it's either voter approved or it's set by state law. That's the only way we could levy. So these are the legislative changes that have affected our twenty twenty-one levy. The twenty nineteen legislature approved an increase in school general education from the formula of two percent for each of the years, um, fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one. The pay twenty twenty-one levy, it doesn't have any change in the jet-in formula. The, the general education formula has zero on it for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. At this time, no legislative changes affect the pay twenty twenty-one levy. Now, this could change when they go into session. So, um, things that happen in the session could impact the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. But at this time, we have, we don't have any changes on it. So this is a chart that shows a basic formula. This is back twenty-nine years showing inflation, you know, versus the general ed formula that we're allowed from the state. So it's just under sixty-five hundred dollars per pupil unit that we get. And if it had kept up with inflation, the top graph, the, the red, we would have thirteen sixty-seven, one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars more per pupil unit than we currently have if it had kept pace with inflation. So this is information on school funding and district budget. School district funds, the district has to record revenues and expenses in different funds, and the general fund is our largest fund. And it has levy and other revenues in it. So it has a part of this levy in it. It, we record daily operating expenses in the general fund. Salary and benefits make up the largest part of this fund. Utilities, we, um, we have the local operating referendum in here. Different health and safety codes, handicap, handicapped accessibility, asbestos and safety requirements are in this fund. Transportation is recorded in this fund and capital expenditures. The food service fund, it doesn't contain any levy. It's, the revenues and expenditures are from serving breakfast. The food service fund, it doesn't contain any levy. It's the revenues and expenditures are from serving breakfast and lunch programs. So there's no levy component. The community ed fund has levy in it and other revenues. And that accounts for lifelong learning programs in the district. And the levy in this fund is based on the adult population of the district. And the early childhood levy is based on the number of children under five years of age. And the debt service levy. The debt service fund, sorry, is it is all levy. And that levy is to pay off principal and interest payments for the building projects that were approved by voters. And it also has all facility bonds, but our district doesn't have that at this current time. So this is our fiscal twenty twenty, twenty one budget. Now, this was adopted in June, May for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one year. And we are, this is a preliminary budget. We haven't done any revisions to it yet this year. So the general fund, as you can see, is our largest fund. The total revenues are fifty million, seven fifty three, eight ninety five. And the expenditures in that fund are fifty one, five oh one, seven forty one. So in May, we did adopt deficit spending, so seven hundred and forty seven thousand, eight forty six is going to come out of the fund balance. We're planning that. So when you look across, it it shows all the other funds. They're a lot, they're a lot smaller than the general fund. That's our main fund. But if you go look over at the total column, the property tax levy for this budget is ten million, eight twenty eight, nine thirty three across all the funds that have used levy. So it's general fund, community ed fund. The building construction fund and then the debt service fund. And state revenue is forty one, two one, seven, nine sixty seven. So the bulk of our revenue across all the funds come from state sources. We also get four million, four seventy four, six oh seven in federal aid. And that goes to two of our funds. It's in the general fund. We get federal aid and also in our food service fund for free and reduced and various federal programs, school lunch program. Other local revenues amounted two point two million, seven ninety two, two seventy five. That's interest donations, other other revenue that comes not from from state and federal sources. So our total revenues for all funds are budgeted at fifty nine million, three thirteen, seven eighty two. And you can see on the bottom, the corresponding expenditures is pretty close. I mean, we are budgeting sixty million, one ninety five, two seventy six across all the funds with deficit spending in fund one and fund four. And a little bit in O P E B trust fund, but that O P E B trust is funded at two and a half times what we need at this current time. So that is our district budget. And this shows our revenues by fund. Our general fund has the majority. It's our largest fund. We have eighty five point five seven, five seven percent of all the revenues in the general fund. The next largest fund is the debt service fund that's paying off our bonds and then community ad comes in third. Expenditures, expenses by fund, the general fund again is the largest fund. Debt service fund, food service fund, community ad. So the proposed taxes payable in twenty twenty one. Proposed property taxes payable in twenty twenty one are eleven million, seven sixty four, four sixty four. So it is made up of voter approved levies. The voter approved is five million, four seventy nine, three oh five. And other local levies are six million, two eighty five, one fifty nine. So this chart, that's hard to read. Can you guys read it? Can you see it? It's pretty small. Okay. This is showing the increase of one million, two sixty three, nine fifty eight on the bottom, the difference and a change of twelve point zero four percent and increase in the property tax levy for pay twenty twenty one. So when describing the largest changes on this chart. As you can see, right before the total on general fund, there is a difference, an increase of eight hundred and eighty one thousand, four sixty in the general fund adjustments column. Now, this is due to a change in the lease levy adjustment. In pay twenty twenty, we had an adjustment to the lease levy of four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. So that is under the seven hundred and eleven. And in this. And in pay twenty twenty one, that that negative adjustment isn't here anymore. Now we have a positive adjustment due to a change in the local equity. Tac, the the local equity levy in pay twenty is a positive adjustment. So we had quite a switch there of eight hundred and eighty one thousand in the general fund adjustments. The other large adjustment is in the referendum levy increase. And this was a loss of tier one referendum aid in payable twenty twenty one. Also prior year adjustments in the referendum calculations. The other increase that I'd like to point out is under, it's the fourth one down here, capital project referendum. It's the capital projects levy that we passed for ten years, you know, includes forty percent for technology and sixty percent for deferred maintenance. So that that capital projects referendum is increasing a hundred and forty four thousand, four oh four. And that is due to the grow growth in the A N T C. Net tax capacity. So it's based on adjusted net tax capacity. That's what that referendum goes off of. So every year it goes. It'll increase. It's been increasing. I mean, if the if the A N T C decreased, this would go down also, but it's an increase of a hundred and forty four thousand. So those are the main adjustments in the general fund. Community ad is decreasing a little bit from prior year adjustments. Debt service is based on the actual debt service payments that the district owes on its bonds that our voter approved. Okay. So this is a slide that just explains those increase, those major changes in the levy from one year to the next. And this is a slide that describes what could happen and why those changes occur in the levy from year to year. So from year to year, there could be a voter approved referendum that was, you know, approved by the voters. We didn't go out for that. There are changes in enrollment, which does happen to our levy every year. And that does cause the adjustments in prior years. Because they, you know, we do, we provide estimates in enrollment and then in in the years they go and put actual and then we have adjustments. So levy adjustments to prior years happen due to changes in enrollment, due to legislative changes. Changes in market value. If the market values of the property are changed or the assessor does a different method or there will be changes in our levy. Changes in class rates or history, that would happen if the legislature did the made changes to the class rates. Because that is statewide and we don't have any control over that. So the impact on the taxpayer. We're just going to show one chart because most of ours are homestead residential property. So this shows on a hundred thousand dollar home. The increase in the tax would be from, it was three hundred and three dollars and pay twenty twenty. And this levy, it would go up to three hundred and thirty one dollars. A hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it was four ninety seven in our last levy and it would be five forty nine on this levy and so on. So Minnesota property tax refunds. There are two different refund programs available from the state. There's a Minnesota property tax refund, circuit breaker refund. And there's a special property tax refund. And you have to complete a form M one P R. And for help with this form or instructions, please contact your tax professional or the Minnesota Department of Revenue at six five one, two nine six, four four, four four, or at state dot taxes, dot state, dot M N, dot U S. And if anyone has any comments or questions.
Maddie, you're on mute.
Thank you. Holly, you're not the only one. This is my first truth and taxation hearing. So I want to ask, is it appropriate for the board members to ask questions now or do we open up to community comment? I'm seeing that, you know, still is maskless, maskless. So I'm assuming there are no community commenters with you.
That's correct. And the district did allow and post an email address and a phone number where we could would take questions in advance. And I don't see Don Hoyam with her camera on, so I I don't think we received a question that way either.
Right. So hearing, nope, Don says no questions. Saw the head shake. All right. Questions from members of the board? Lorian.
First, I I just want to commend Denise. That was a lot of information and I liked the visuals. So thank you. That helps kind of put things together. I know, you know, and again, tons of information and I know school finance is challenging. It's still challenging for me as I maneuver my way through it. Comes down to, I know many of our taxpayers look at their tax, proposed tax statements and see that there is an increase from last year to this year. And I know that in years prior, we've had decreases. You know, and and a lot of that is due to the adjustments that are made from one year to the next, as well as the next net tax capacity. And can you just just talk just briefly a little bit more about that? So if somebody's maybe got overwhelmed by the presentation that they can kind of understand, just in a nutshell, that the that the increase on on the taxes from last year to this year related to the school board is due to, is due to what?
The the big changes this year are due to the the lease adjustment that we didn't have this year. I mean, it was close to five hundred thousand. It was a negative adjustment last year. So that wasn't here anymore. So immediately it's five hundred thousand higher due to that negative not being here this year. And then also we had adjustments for prior years for referendum. So the levy is like forty, over forty pages long and there's calculations from prior years. So we have to provide, at this time, I'm I'm providing estimates for the twenty one, twenty two school year, what the enrollments will be. So doing, I'm I'm providing projections. And then the next year, they'll start to calculate whether how close we were on those and you'll see adjustments. So a lot of the referendums, I mean, the different pieces of this referendum. On the levies and different ones go off in enrollment. And so also the other reason that you're not that we're seeing, I think, the larger increases, there was no increase in the state share. You know, we have, there was zero. So more is going to land on the taxpayers.
And that and that's really a balance, right? I mean, the state pays for some and the local taxpayers pay for some and that that all kind of equals the same number. And if the state is paying less, then the local taxpayers are paying more.
Exactly, Lorian. Yep.
It's not like the school board is getting any, or not excuse the school, but the public schools are getting any more more funds. It's where those funds are coming from.
Correct. So we'll we'll be getting more in tax levy, but then we're receiving less in state aid.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just dovetail onto that? Director Sunstrom. So it's the it's the state essentially saying, all right, Columbia Heights, you have a higher tax capacity. So the proportionality is going to change. Is that a, is that a fair way to kind of put it in simple terms or am I oversimplifying that too much?
Yeah, and some of the levies, yep, they're based on A N T C on tax, net tax capacity. Yep.
And that is a state determined formula, you said, that it's a forty page formula or something like that?
This forty page is a formula. I know one district, we used to handle levy and then go over it. Formula by formula with the board. So, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, what was the question?
And then, no, I just wanted to, I wanted to ask if it was a proportionality based on an aid, or sorry, a formula that the state itself sets.
The net tax capacity is set by the county.
Oh, the county.
They calculate it. They calculate it based on the property values. Yeah, in our district.
Got it. And then what what's the consequence for us if we don't like agree to to increase the local taxation that looks like by twelve point zero four percent? What what's the repercussions for the school district?
Um, well, you would have had to decide that in September.
Okay, yeah, because we, right, yeah.
In September, we say maximum, just because if we don't, we can't capture any changes in the levy or if there's errors in the formula. So we said maximum back back in September, which I've never been in a district that hasn't said maximum in September, but if we didn't want to levy at all in September, we would actually put a dollar amount on. And so we would put that on and when the clerk signs it. Then we would, we would be stuck with that dollar amount then, even if there were changes or we found something that we had missed on the levy. But what happens then when you do that? Some of the the levies, the state doesn't like if you're going to decide, well, you get part of it from oh, let's say Q comp. We don't have Q comp here, but or a different, I mean, let's do Q comp. But if you get some from levy and some from state and you decide, well, I don't want to levy. The state could say, well, we're not giving you all the aid then.
Okay.
So sometimes underlevying can jeopardize state aid on certain funding sources.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I asked questions to other members or or Superintendent Stendvik. Do you have questions? Assuming you've been well briefed on this superintendent. But other questions, kind of strolling through, looking for hands. Laura, are you? I see you're on mute. All right. Last call for questions here. Great. So at this point, do we move on from the truth and taxation portion of the evening and then go on to the action items?
Yes.
Is that how this typically works?
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you so much for that presentation. Like Lorian said, that's a lot. And you're explaining a very complicated thing in a way to help us. We appreciate that. All right, we will move then on to the action items and as promised, the first action item is the twenty twenty one pay levy.
Yes. Let me get to that. So. Good evening, Superintendent Stendvik. Chair Severson and members of the board. Each year, we must certify our school levy in in December after the tax hearing, which we just had. And attached is a spreadsheet indicating the levy components and the changes in the levy from last year. And so I'm asking the board to approve that tax levy in the amount of eleven million, seven sixty four, four sixty four for the pay twenty twenty one levy.
All right. Can I get a motion to move that forward? John, a second?
Second.
Give that one to Laura. Any discussion, questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
You're on mute, Molly.
Going around tonight.
I hit the button. I swear I did. Did you guys see me? I did.
I did not hit it my time, so I can't even claim that.
Larkin.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
A Samurai.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Severson.
Hi.
Louis, hi.
All right, motion carries. We are going to now move on to the audit, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year audit, which is confusing because now we're moving back in time again from the pay levy. So.
Yeah, yes. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stendvik. We have tonight Matt Mayer, partner, our partner from Bergen K D V. He's our with our independent audit firm and he's going to present the financial highlights and results of our twenty twenty audit. And so this report was reviewed with the board last week on December eighth at the work session. And tonight, then, when Matt is done, we'll be, well, we'll have, we'll take questions and then also we'll be asking you to accept the audit report. So Matt?
Thanks, Denise, Chair Severson, members of the board, superintendent. Thanks for the invitation to present again this evening. As Denise mentioned, we did do a very deep dive with you last week at your work session on these numbers and the results of our audit. And administration is asking you tonight to formally accept the audit so it can submit it to the state of Minnesota to accurately file your report for the nineteen twenty school year. I'm going to just briefly highlight some of the major items from the presentation last week. I know you've had a week to spend with it now. I know you've had a week to spend with it now, and if you have questions that arose after the presentation from my colleague Caroline last week, at least plenty of time at the end, but we are issuing three reports right now for you, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean, for the best opinion we can offer you, it means that the numbers that we're presenting tonight are a true and accurate picture of the district's financial position. We're also issuing a report on internal control, that is, the way you do business, your policies and procedures to safeguard your assets and ensure accurate financial reporting at the end of each year. We have our perennial finding regarding lack of segregation of accounting duties, just reminding you, with a small office staff, we don't get all the touches we'd like to get in an ideal world, when it comes to the transactions that go through your finance department. And then the final report that we're issuing tonight is related to Minnesota legal compliance. This is all the statutes that apply to school districts in the state of Minnesota, contracting and bidding, conflicts of interest and the like. And again, happy to report no findings there as well. One report that you typically receive this time of year, that we're not issuing yet, is what we call our single audit report, and that's your compliance report to the federal government, to show that you spent your federal grants appropriately. We do this on a rotating basis, some years, we work on your child nutrition grants, sometimes we look at your title programs, sometimes we look at special ed. And this year, your CARES funding came up for review and audit. The problem is, is that the feds have not finalized their audit rules for that, we were told late autumn. We're here in December, we still don't have the audit guidelines for that, so we're not in a position to complete our audit related to the CARES funding. So we will issue the reports that you have tonight, we ask you to accept them, so that you can submit them to the state by December 31st. And then, the committee will come back to you at a later month, we hope January, but perhaps a little later in the year, with your single audit report for acceptance of that, so that can be submitted to the federal government. If you recall, last week, we talked about the general fund operations in the context of the budget. As a board, you approved a budget for 1920 that spent down about $3 million of the reserves that you had. And a significant portion of that spend out had to do with capital activities, spending down your operating capital restrictions, as well as some long-term facilities maintenance. So not necessarily operational deficits, but basically some one-time spending with some one-time dollars that were already in reserve. The revenue for the year actually came in better than anticipated at 1.2 million dollars. State special education aid was over the budgeted amounts, but spending for the year was also over budget by about 1.8 million. Special education played a role in that, but some of that capital spending that you had budgeted came a little bit over budget as well. Some severance payments that were made during the year that worked in the initial budget. And you also had some unbudgeted positions in the area of social work that resulted in some overages as well. So rather than a deficit of $3 million for the year, the fund balance did fall by about $3.7 million, and you ended the year with a $3.6 million fund balance. This is a very small chart, and I apologize for that, there's a lot of data on here. But the point we're trying to make with this chart is that at the end of the year, you had a $3.6 million fund balance in total. That compares to 7 million in the prior year. But the discretionary portion of the fund balance, or the fund balance that you have control over as board members, only went down by about $250,000 or so, about 300,000 actually, for the year, from about 3.3 million dollars to about $3 million overall. That, the rest of that deficit was actually absorbed in the areas that I mentioned, you spent down operating capital by about $800,000. You had a million dollars in reserve to begin the year, ended the year with about $200,000. Long-term facilities maintenance, you spent that down by about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars, where there's actually a deficit position that'll be reimbursed for future levy and aid there. So after everything was said and done for the 2019-20 school year, if we look at your fund balance position, or your financial health in relation to your fund balance policy, you're right in the heart of the threshold that you've established for yourself. You say you want to be between six and 12, and you ended the year with an 8.2% fund balance. You can see you have been growing that each of the last several years, up to a high point back in 2019 of 12.5%. Utilized significant portions of that here in 2020, but still, even after that, you're within the parameters that you've set for yourself for financial health. Pretty much right in the middle of that range there. And that's important, to have that level of financial health going into this fiscal year and the, and the next biennium. The legislature's meeting this winter, obviously, they have challenges at the state level with their financial situation. K through 12 funding is the most significant portion of the state budget. And if adjustments are going to be made to that state budget, it is almost assured that something's going to happen with K through 12 funding or financing. And we typically, I've been doing this about 20 years now, I haven't seen a cut actually in your state funding. But what I have seen is that they delay payments to you, and you have to wait for the cash to come in. Right now, your state aid payments are paid 90% throughout the school year, so it's available for you to pay payroll, pay your vendors with that 90%, and then the other 10% comes in after the end of the year. I anticipate one of the tools that the legislature is going to use this year is to roll that back, maybe to 80/20, maybe to 75/25, maybe to 70/30. At the height of the recession back in 2009, 2010, that actually got rolled back to 63%. So that was a significant burden on school districts to try and cash flow their operations. And I do see on the agenda tonight that you're already anticipating that with some aid anticipation approval. And the reason for that is not because of your financial health, it's because of the metering and the way that you're going to be receiving your cash payments from the state, or we anticipate that's going to happen. So my message to you tonight is that you do have a healthy financial position within the parameters that you set for yourself, despite a spend down of that fund balance during 2020. Clouds on the horizon that you need to be conscious of. You may want to be very conservative when it comes to what you're anticipating from a growth standpoint, if any growth at all regarding your funding. And then also be prepared, from a cash standpoint, to make sure that you have safeguards in place to ensure you have adequate cash, a liquid position to keep the district running, if the state does use that holdback to help balance their budget at the state level. To wrap things up tonight, a quick look at your food service fund. Very unusual year for food service with the remote learning, not a lot of onsite meals after March of this year, and you can see both revenue and expenditures were significantly down for the year. Meals served also down significantly year over year, but despite all that, a small surplus for the year. And you actually ended the year with a $600,000 fund balance, nearly a 30%, actually a little over a 30% fund balance to end the year. And the community service fund is a fund that most districts saw significant challenges with, because it's a fee-based fund, a fee for service, people leave their homes to have evening classes for early childhood, for school readiness, all the community education offerings that you have. And this fund actually did a pretty nice job in weathering that storm, we didn't see significant declines in operations. It did have a deficit for the year, but this fund had a strong financial position to begin the year, and that deficit was easily absorbed with the fund balance that you had. As I mentioned, this fund has a lot of different activities, ECFE, community ads, school readiness and the like, and each of those have their separate fund balances, and each of those fund balances had a positive position at the end of the 2020 school year as well. So I think with all the challenges that you had for 2020, that the district did a nice job weathering that storm. You ended the year in a reasonable financial shape in all three of your main operating funds. And administration is asking you to accept this audit and these numbers as the true and accurate picture of the district's results for 1920, and let you move on with the 2021 school year, operating it, and budget for the 2122 school year next. So be happy to stay online for whatever remaining questions you have prior to acceptance.
Alright, before we move on to discussion, can I get a motion to move that forward?
I'm moved.
Lorian, thank you, second?
Okay.
Thanks Molly. Any discussion on that, any questions? Lorian?
I have two questions. First, Denise, can, maybe you just talk a little bit, back in the beginning, we kind of talked about where our financial position was, and we talked, it was presented that expenditures were, were over budget this year, can you talk a little bit about that, and where that, where those, those overages came from?
Okay, um, yep. We had overages in capital spending, so that was long-term facility maintenance. So we had quite a budget, a reserve balance built up in LTFM due to, you know, we were waiting to pass the referendum for North Park. So we built up reserves in LTFM, and we built up reserves in operating capital. So this 1920 was the year that we planned to spend those, and we overspent the LTFM a little bit, a couple hundred thousand, and also 200,000 in operating capital. Also severance was over budget. We had not budgeted for certain, well, a big severance that we had, we didn't know how much that would be, and then there were unbudgeted social workers. We had two social worker positions that we hired during 1920. And so special ed was a little bit, well, special ed was over budget also. So that made up the 1.8 million that was over budget, but you can see in special ed, we did generate more revenue, so that 1.2 million over budget, some of that was special ed aid also.
Thank you. And then my, my other question, you almost kind of answered, but for clarification, I think it's good to point out that the, the fund balance that was reported in 2019, kind of that, just was it 12%?
Twelve and a half, yeah.
Part of that is almost artificially inflated, because there is that, the long-term facilities maintenance and those dollars that are in there that were intended to be spent in this fiscal year, correct?
Um, well, no.
Actually, no, that's an unrestricted number, that is your discretionary fund balance, it would have been a little higher than that, actually, so.
Yep.
Operations increased this year, so the, the denominator in that calculation actually grew. So that, when that happens, the percentage shrinks a little bit, even though your discretionary fund balance remained relatively flat, although it did take a step back a few hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, we had budgeted 9.4, and we turned out at 8.2.
Okay, great, thank you.
Awesome, other questions? I'm trying to look around. Laura, Holly, you're still muted, okay. Hearing no more questions, we'll move to a roll call vote, please. Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
A Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis, aye. Motion carries, great. Thank you so much, Matt, for joining us today, and it's so helpful to, is he still on? I don't even see him.
I'm here, yep, thanks.
Oh, great, there, oh, there, off the left of my screen. Thank you so much for joining us, I make, again, Denise, again, for this, for making a complicated thing understandable enough for us to hopefully make responsible decisions, and yet actually understand what we're doing, so thank you.
Thank you, have a great school year.
Yep, thanks. We'll move on to the aid anticipation resolution, Director Sunstrom.
Hey Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stendvik. We had an information item presented on November 24th. Kelly Smith was here from Baker Tilly to answer questions on our short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes. And that was an information item on the 24th. So tonight, we're asking you to approve the authorizing resolution for aid anticipation certificates.
Alright, can I get a motion to move that forward? Oh, let me read the resolution, to keep it uniform, hold on, I'll have to go to that, and then we will. Alright, let me, alright. Resolution relating to $1,750,000 general obligation aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness series 2021A, authorizing the insurance establishing the terms thereof, and authorizing the Director of Finance and Operations and the Superintendent to award the sale thereof, and to take such action and execute all documents necessary to accomplish said award and sales. Be it resolved by the school board, the Board of Independent School District Number 13 Columbia Heights Public Schools, Minnesota, the district as follows, section one authorization. It is hereby found, determined, declared that certain state aids for schools receivable by the district during the July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021 fiscal year will not be received in time to meet necessary expenditures for the purposes for which such aid is receivable. The district is authorized pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 126C.50 through 126C.56 to borrow money by the insurance of its aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness in a particular, in a principal amount not greater than 75% of the amount of such aids receivable by the district during the 2021 fiscal year, and has determined to issue its general obligation aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness series 2021A in an amount not to exceed 100, 1,750,000, the certificates against aids receivable for fonts one, two, and four. The principal amount of the certificates to be issued pursuant to this resolution is within said statutory borrowing, borrowing limitation. The district's certificate, as to, the, excuse me, the district's certificate as to state aids from the Commissioner of Education of the state of Minnesota will be received prior to the date on which the certificates are issued. Section two, approval of the sale of the certificates pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 126C.56, the requirement of public sales do not apply to the assurance under certain circumstances of aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness. The district has retained Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC in St. Paul, Minnesota, as the independent municipal advisor in connection with the sale of the certificates. The board desires to proceed with the sale of certificates by direct negotiation to Piper Sandler &amp; Co. in Minneapolis, Minnesota, the purchaser, and the Director of Finance and Operations and the Superintendent are hereby authorized and directed to award the sale of certificates and execute a certificate purchase agreement on the part of the district for the sale of the certificates, provided that the principal amount of the certificates shall not in any event exceed $1,750,000, nor shall interest thereon.
1,75,000.
Sorry, thank you, thank you for.
Sorry to interrupt you, I'm really sorry, I was afraid.
No, it should be right, no, it's great, thank you. $1,75,000, did I nail it that time Denise?
Yes.
Nor shall interest thereon exceed, in any event, 2.5% per annum. Section three, board ratification of sale. Upon approval of the sale of the certificates by the Director of Finance and Operations and Superintendent, the board shall meet at its next regularly scheduled or special meeting to adopt a certificate resolution prepared by the district's bond council ratifying the sale of the certificates and incorporating the terms and conditions of the proposals so accepted. Section four, official statement. Baker Tilly is authorized to prepare and distribute official statements related to the sale of the certificates. Is there a third, yep, section five, expiration of authority. If the Director of Finance and Operations and Superintendent have not approved the sale of certificates and executed the related certificate purchase agreement by January 30th, 2021, this resolution shall expire. And just to be clear, if I misstated, the number is $1,75,000. If I said it wrong throughout, it should have been $1,75,000. Alright, can I get a motion to move that forward? Holla? I saw Holla raise her hand, does it have to be verbal? I think it probably should be verbal.
I can make the motion.
Uh, sorry, say that again?
Said if you want it verbal, I can make it verbal.
Alright, go ahead, I will go give Holla that, that motion. John, is that, is that good? Can we get a thumbs up from you, Don?
Yes ma'am, Chair.
Thank you, and John gave the second there, thank you. Any discussion on this one? Alright, thank you, Lorian.
Yeah, just real quick, I think just to clarify, and I, I think our previous presentation, they kind of talked about that, that, that this isn't due to unavailable funds or, or lack of funds, really, it's the availability of the funds at the timing that it's needed. So it's in preparation for it potentially. So it's in preparation for a potential delay of funding, as well as, I think we talked in our, the info item, that some of the funding that we have received due to the pandemic, where we have to have the expenditures first and then have reimbursements, the timing just isn't working. So it's in anticipation of, of taking care of those issues.
Yes, thanks, that's a good clarification, and again, just remind, we're watching once again. Other questions? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please. Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye. Oh, sorry, thank you Molly, motion carries. I would like to thank, thank Director Sunstrom, Denise, for her time in the Columbia Heights School District. This is her last meeting and her last presentation to us. Do you, she's excited. Does anyone want to have anything they want to say? Lauren, I think you, you probably have something you want to say to Denise.
Yeah, I, I may have asked before the meeting if I could make sure I said something, because, you know, that's just who I am. But Denise, I'm going to miss you more than John, no, I'm kidding. But maybe I'm not. I just really appreciate all of, just everything that you've done over the years that I've been on the board and that, you know, you've done presentations, you've really helped explain everything and put it in charts and graphs and answered all of my crazy questions that I have regarding the finances and the budget. And you've done so with patience and professionalism, and you've been fantastic. So truly, I thank you and have really enjoyed working with you.
Oh, thank you, Lauren, you've been so much help, and they were not crazy questions, and this board is just really amazing, it's just such a good board. So it's been a pleasure.
John.
I would just echo what Lauren said, some of her questions are kind of crazy, by the way Denise, but to the end, you're being professional all the way through it. But thank you, you have, for me personally, you've made things much clearer, easier to understand as we've gone some through some of, even an example of tonight, the very difficult formulas and different things out there. You've taken the time to make sure that we've had the opportunity to understand what's going on. So thank you and good luck with whatever you're going to do.
Yeah, thank you, you too.
Thanks.
Molly.
Yeah, thank you Denise, we will certainly miss you, just as a board member that's not so much like Lauren. You've always made it simple from the beginning, like those graphs and everything that you've presented have been just phenomenal and very helpful, always professional, so thank you, we will miss you, but good luck.
Thank you, thanks, I'll miss you.
Hala, I see you unmuted there.
Um, just want to say thank you Denise for, for everything. It's been a joy to work with you and we will miss you.
Thanks, Hala.
And Laura.
Oh, thank you so much Denise for working with us, and I'm, I'm really going to miss you getting really excited about the bids, roof bids and tuck pointing, and it just made your presentation, it's just a lot of, uh, very enjoyable as well as informative. Thank you so much and good luck in your future adventures.
Oh my gosh, thanks Laura, I know they are, it's pretty exciting and it's not as fun as being on Zoom, because when we're in the room, the superintendent usually is like looking at me like, stop, you know? But can't do it on Zoom.
There's less subtlety on Zoom, there's no subtlety anymore on Zoom. So Denise, thanks, it was great getting to know you, even through crazy times like mediation. Your sense of humor amidst, uh, what is a crazy world of finance is appreciated, and I hope that you carry that into whatever's next and really enjoy whatever's to come for you. So thank you.
Thanks, Maddie, it was fun, I forgot about that day.
That was fun, it was not fun, but there were fun moments, so yeah, that was, there were fun moments, so. All right, well, thank you again, and best of luck to you. All right, we will move on to the police liaison contract.
Thank you Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik this evening. I'm here with Director Niemwee, and before you, if, uh, have an action item of approval of our FY twenty-one, um, school, the, our resource officer contract. This was presented to the board at previous work session, at previous information item at the regular school board meeting, and we've, as discussed previously, we've made some small changes to the contract moving forward. We added a, an objective five, um, to include liaison officers in our equity training. I know that our police department has been a leader in the state and, and their equity training work and has, has really, but we really wanted to make sure that the SROs are directly involved in, in the same training that the teachers are getting. And other than that, there was, the, the contract is, is, is pretty close to what it was for the FY twenty. Again, just to note on this contract, it is for two liaison officers, our resource officers, one for the middle school, one for the high school, and this runs from January first twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first twenty twenty-one.
All right, thank you Brian, can I get a motion to move this forward?
Oh.
John. Second.
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion. And I know, just, I will preface this by saying, this will be our third conversation about this. If you're tuning in, we had a conversation in our last regular board meeting and in the work session prior to that. So if you're interested in seeing any of that conversation, you can go back to our regular meeting and Director Niemwee and Hennickens presented us with some information on school surveys to help inform our decision. But I want to continue to open it up for conversation here, or questions.
Can I ask a question to start this conversation? To the directors, do we know, just because it is right around the corner, if the officers will remain the same for the beginning of the school of twenty twenty-one?
Yes, they will be the same.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I think we've spoken, is it okay if I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead Molly.
I got to raise my hand. Um, you know, we've spoken at length, and so I don't want to continue to restate, you know, all of the points that we've talked about before, but I think it's important to just acknowledge that a, as we think about this, you know, there is really no right answer for every student in our building on this. And I think as a board, we're making decisions, and I just want to, you know, really consider that tonight, that when we're making these decisions, it doesn't mean that we're not considering how others feel if we don't make the decision that they believe is the right one. And so really, I think this is probably one of the most difficult votes, I think, in the board that we've seen over the last few years. It's, it's challenging because it's very emotional, it's charged for a lot of people. And when we vote, I just don't want anyone to think that it's not that we didn't hear, but as a board member, what I'm going to be doing is making the vote that I believe is best for the majority of our students, or what I believe is in the best interests of our district. And so just keeping that in mind, that, um, you know, there's a lot of populations that feel strongly one way or the other. I just, I think I have a different perspective than a lot of people would maybe expect, having had conversations with, you know, kind of the targeted, um, population that we're really focused on, or, you know, quite a bit of, is that, you know, sixteen to eighteen-year-old young African-American men, and the ones that I've spoken with have all just really talked about, um, they, they like having the SRO for several reasons, and part of that is that as long as they're cool, like JP is kind of how we hear it, right? And as a board, we've committed to making sure that even though those SROs belong to the Columbia Heights Police Department, they're not our employees, but that we'll continue to have oversight. And it was really important for me to hear from Director Hennickens in a previous meeting that we did remove an officer previously because things weren't going well. Um, I don't know exactly what the details were, but we, we can have those conversations. We can push back if need be, I don't see that being a problem. I think Columbia Heights Police Department is a, a lot unique, not just in our area or state, but in the country. And so, um, I guess just kind of considering all of that, that we do, um, continue to have that relationship with the police department, and I think that's an important part of this here. And the other thing that I'll say is just, you know, even if we remove the SROs, I was talking to another board member about this, it doesn't mean that we would never have police in our schools. I really appreciate having that person there and knowing that there'd be a relationship if something happens for the de-escalation, because that's one of the most important things and de-escalation is having some rapport. So just the value that I think that, that does provide. Um, I know this is a contentious, you know, conversation, and there's been, um, an article in the Heights Herald. I don't want to dismiss anything that anyone is feeling, that is not my intention with any of this.
Thanks Molly. More words? We'll talk.
Um, I, I've, I've said a lot about this matter, and I don't want to repeat everything, but, um, I've been contacted by a number of students, and, um, they said some things that I can't really put into my own words, so if it's okay, I just want to quote some of the things they said, is that okay, Maddie?
Oh, sorry, this is your time to share what you think is appropriate, so.
I'm muting my phone this. Okay, so, um, one person said, and these are hard things to read, um, and I know it doesn't mean it's across the board, but one person said, "I'm constantly afraid of judgment. As a black coming-of-age woman, the survey had me scared that the school would retaliate and not listen to my opinion. It can be hard as a person of color voicing your opinion and not being heard." Okay, somebody else said that while SROs can be involved in supporting, right now I'm paraphrasing, well, SROs can be involved in supporting school shootings and things of that sort, they can also end up being involved in things as small as outbursts with a teacher. That to me was alarming, I didn't, I didn't, I hadn't heard about that, that's, that's alarming that that SROs are getting involved with discipline. Um, or that somebody is saying that they are, if it's, if it's just a perception. Someone else said that having SROs in the school serves as a way to criminalize minors, which isn't fair nor acceptable. We have to actively spot the injustices in the American educational system, justice system and system as a whole, and find better ways to handle disputes in schools and have comfortable resources for our students rather than policing us. So, that's what I have.
Thanks for sharing that with us. Do other board members have comments, questions? Lauren.
Um, first, I want to thank Hala for, for sharing that information and for Molly for sharing your perspective. I think, um, you know, I, I think this is a challenging position to be in, it's for me particularly. Like, like Molly said, I think this is probably one of the, the toughest decisions we've had to make. And I appreciate the conversations that I've had with Superintendent Stenvik as we've, we've talked more about this. And, you know, whichever way this, this goes tonight and kind of what the future holds, one, there's a couple of things, I'm, I'm comforted that the, if the contract is approved, it is a one-year contract. And so that allows for some ability to continue to, um, to evaluate whether or not the, the situation is working, whether or not the officers are right, and, and how that relationship works. Also, I, I think, I mentioned this when we first talked about this, is that, again, if the decision is made tonight to approve the contract, that we know that there are some students both that had said something on the survey or that have communicated to, to Hala, that, that, that they have some issues with a, a resource officer in the schools. And I think we can't dismiss that, knowing that some students may need some assistance, support, advocacy, and, uh, in a, in an environment to have the conversation. I also, you know, appreciate the surveys that Director Nwembe has put together and that the principals had worked on, but knowing that, you know, when, when some of the, you know, this has been a conversation for, really for a while in, in other communities and in, in some communities closer to home, really at a time when our students weren't in our buildings. So having some face-to-face, heart-to-heart conversations has been challenged by the distance that our students have had. So knowing that these can, conversations within our communities and within our school with our students needs to continue, um, so that we can have positive relationships with the Columbia Heights Police Department, and our students can feel supported no matter what decisions are made.
Thank you, Lauren, other comments? Laura, I see you're unmuted, John, you're also unmuted, just.
Um, I actually, I, I have a, a comment as well. I, because of the fact that we do not have students actually in the schools right now, I want to continue, um, reaching out, if we approve this contract tonight, continue reaching out and getting surveys and feedback, um, so that we can continue improving the program or, um, or have more information for being able to, to make the right decision for all of our students. So that's just kind of an out-there request, is that it's not just going to be a one-and-done, is that we do some dip, uh, dip surveys during the course of the year. So it's just a request.
Thanks Laura. More comments, thoughts?
I, I want to point out, I mean, maybe it's obvious, but I just, I also want to say it again. None of anything that we're considering or that we're grappling with has anything to do with the officers we're working with. Um, they've been wonderful exemplary police officers, wonderful exemplary people, human beings for our students to be working with, none of this is about any of them personally. It's just about, um, the role that is being taken on and how it sits within society today.
Yeah, thank you, um, you know, thinking about how to give people voice when that's difficult or intimidating. As you read, um, can, it can be intimidating, and the more I'm learning, the more I'm understanding that, and I'm thankful, um, that we can have, uh, an ongoing dialogue about this. It's, I think it's a healthy part of our school district, it shows a care for, uh, people and a commitment to equity in our school district, that this is a conversation that we're willing to have and that hopefully is ongoing, and I concur, it's, it's, it's been a tough conver, it's been a tough topic for me personally. I've had to think through it from many different directions, and I'm trying to do my best to make a decision for creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, you know? So, any other thoughts, comments, I don't need the last word by any means. All right, then we'll move it forward to a roll call vote, Molly, please. Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Nay.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the definitely less climactic high school roof bids, it feels almost, um, strange, it's, it's very emotionally whiplash-y to just say that and then, oh, now roof bids, but that's how a board meeting works, so Director Hennickens.
Uh, thank you Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. Before you, for approval, um, we have the high school roof bids, still bids were received on November seventeenth, and presented at the November twenty-fourth regular school board meeting as an information item. And we are seeking approval, we have a recommendation from company we're working with on this roof project, the Garland Company, for, um, the low bidder, responsible low bidder, Peterson Brothers Roofing for seven hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, and this would cover roof sections A, B one, B two, and B three of the high school. So, uh, the wing, basically, as you pull into the horseshoe- the wing, basically as you pull into the horseshoe, the wing that's up above the, the office area there. So it's the east part of the building and then above the district center and above the math wing. Uh, this project is funded through long-term facility maintenance dollars. And will start this summer and end in June and end by the start of the next school year.
All right. Any, oh, we need a motion. Can I get a motion on this one?
I'm a.
Molly, second?
Second.
Laura, thank you. Discussion. Lorian.
Um, Director Hennekenz, can you just reiterate on how this falls within the budget that we have for this project?
Yeah, so um, we definitely have a few handful or a handful of major projects this year that were going out for bid. And as you heard earlier tonight, last year we did spend the buildup of long-term facility maintenance dollars and then some. You know, part of that is carryover from one fiscal year to the other. Project starts in one fiscal year, ends in another fiscal year. So did the project start successfully on time or were there delays in the project and the project was more heavy in July and August, which would be the next fiscal year. So that's kind of how that carryover can affect us. And so anybody that, you know, sees that number and is, is concerned by it, we, you know, it just happens to be how that hits over, over the course of the fiscal year. It was a spend down, but it just happened to hit you know, a little bit harder in June and heading into July and August. So it's definitely within the budget. The other projects that we have for long-term facility maintenance dollars this, this fiscal year came in really well. Our bids came in lower than what we anticipated. So this one did come in a little bit higher than anticipated, but it definitely fits within our, our long-term facility maintenance dollars budget.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, roll call vote please.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Thanks, Brian. We will move on to the resolution to combine precincts with our very own Don Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Severson, Member of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight I bring before you the resolution to combine polling places in the case of a special election. This was presented at the November 24th meeting as a cost savings if we were have to have a special election. We would combine 13 precincts down to two. This need, resolution needs to be approved yearly to have it in, in case we need it.
Great. I'll read that resolution and then I'll ask for a motion. All right, here we go. Giddy up. It's not quite as complicated of language as the last one I read, nor are there large dollar amounts, thankfully. I'll also be prepared. All right, resolution establishing combined polling places for, for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for the school district elections not held on the day of a statewide county or municipal election. Be it resolved by the School District of Independence 13 State of Minnesota as follows. One, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A point 11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Two, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, 205A point 11, when no other election is being held in school districts, the school board may designate combined polling places at which the voters in those precincts may vote in the school district election. Three, by December 31st of each year, the school board must designate by resolution combining polling places. The combined polling places designated in the resolution are the polling places for the following calendar year unless changes made. One, pursuant to Section 204B point 172, or because a polling place has become unavailable. Four, if the school board designated combined polling place in pursuit to the subdivision, polling places must be designated throughout the district, taking into account both geographical distribution and population distribution. A combined polling place must be at a location designated for use as a polling place by county or municipality. Five, in school districts that have organized the separate board members election district under Section 205A point 12, a combined polling place for school general election must be arranged so that it does not include more than one board member election district. Uh, so we would have independent school district polling place one, Valleyville Elementary School, 849th Avenue, four Columbia Heights precincts P1, P2, P7, P8, Fridley Ward 1, P4, Fridley Ward 3, P4, and Hilltop P1. Uh, and then we'd have at Independence School District, P2, at Highland Elementary School, at 1549th Avenue, four Columbia Heights, P3, P4, P5, P6, and Fridley Ward 2, P3, and Fridley Ward 2, P4. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A point 09, the polling place will remain open for voting for school district elections between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Seven, the clerk is directed to prepare a map illustrating the boundaries of each combined precinct. To post the map of the combined precincts in the administrative office for the school district and to file a copy of the map and certified copy of this resolution with the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. Eight, as required by Minnesota statute, 204B point 16 subdivision 1A, the clerk is hereby authorized to give written notice of new polling places, new polling place locations to all registered voters in the school district whose school district polling places locations have been changed. The notice must be non-foreable. Notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election to which it will apply. All right. Giddy up. Could I get a motion to move that one forward?
So moved.
Thank you Laura. Second.
Second.
Lorian, did I get all the numbers right? I hope so. Less, less big numbers there. All right, any discussion on that? All right, roll call please.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
We'll move on, we'll move on to board policies, second reading. So we have had the first reading come through and now we're in the second reading. And so the description is a policy 13, sorry, 413 harassment and violence form only, 419 tobacco-free environments, 516 student medication, 809 COVID-19 face covering policy, 903 visitor to the school district buildings and sites. These policies appeared on the November 24th, 2020 meeting for review and approval will be sought after, at tonight's meeting, which is now. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
I'll move.
John, second?
Second.
Laura, Superintendent Stenvik, have we had anyone from the community comment on these policies that we should be aware of?
Madam Chair, member and members, we have not received any questions or comments regarding these policies.
Thank you. Any other discussion from board members? All right, Molly, please.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Great. And that is our action items for tonight. Um, I think so, right? Let me just, just double check. All right, looks good. We will then move on to board topics and I would like to start off our board topics by saying, hey, John Larkin. I had to know this moment was coming, right?
Yeah.
We, yeah, uh-huh. We are so thankful for you, for those of you watching, if you're still hanging on with us, this is John's last board meeting with us after eight years on the board. We're so thankful for his service to our community. And I think Superintendent Stenvik has a little something planned.
Yes, in fact, we'll turn that over to Brian. John, there are a few representatives from the schools, from the district and also from the school board that wanted to say a few words to you. And so we'll pass it over to John. And then also I think you have something at your, after this little video, I think there's something that you have at your house that you're going to open up for us too. Okay.
All right. Let me get my screen shared here. John, on behalf of Columbia Heights High School and Columbia Heights Public Schools, I'd like to thank you for your years of service to our school district and being a board member. Um, as your years of being a board member, we appreciated your leadership and your direction of where the district's at today and where it was at when you started. It's, it's in such a better place with your leadership and direction. Um, I can only thank you for giving us that and making it a better place and a better education for all students. On this journey as a Highlander, John, as you know, didn't start as a board member. You've been a Highlander your whole entire life. Um, being, having that and being part of Columbia Heights Public Schools for your whole entire life has really shown you and us, and you've shown us what it is to be a true Highlander. When we had the mock car crashes for prom, to make awareness of the pitfalls of drinking and driving and, and the impact that can have on families, you were the person behind the scenes to do whatever it took to make this a successful event. Our homecoming bonfires, you quietly showed up to school weeks before making sure if we needed firewood. You planned and made sure that we had our fire department there to make sure that the students had the best bonfire possible. The little things that no one really saw you do. John, not only were you proud of the two children that you raised and graduated from Columbia Heights High School, you were also proud and were a parent of hundreds of Columbia Heights graduates. And you always had the vision of making sure that each and every child that came through our school district received a quality education, including your two children. In your leadership and being part of our school, our school system, you were able to promote and invest in, in facilities and programming to build our school district to what it is today. With your leadership and your investment of your own time and your, your abilities has made our school system what it is today. I congratulate you and thank you for your years of service. I hope you enjoy the rides that are ahead of you in your next chapter of your life. We appreciate that you are a true Highlander and everything that you've done is in the name of being a Highlander and we thank you for that. John, remember as you go into the next journey or chapter in your life, to always remember to keep it real.
John, thank you for all your good work. You're a man of integrity. You've done so much for our district. Thank you. We wish you all the best in your retirement. Hope to see you around.
John, I'd like to thank you for the leadership that you've shown and the services that you have provided for Columbia Heights Public Schools. You know, in our times of most difficult struggle, you were always out in front with strength. And in our best of times, you were always behind us with a quiet humility. And I learned a lot from that. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Member Larkin, on your retirement from serving on the Columbia Heights Public School School Board. It's been many years, I think 14, since I was able to come to know you with your volunteering with our early childhood programs as a firefighter, coming and visiting our students in our classes. And the children always enjoyed learning how to be fire safe with you and your colleagues. And then also coming to know you as you served on the school board and also when we went to Denver for the All-American City Award. Thank you so much for your service. You've done so many things for our community, for our district and for our students and families. Well done. You have really made a difference in the community and in our district. So thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done for the school district. You truly have made an impact on each and every student and staff in our district. So thank you and congratulations.
Hey, John, I'd like to just take a moment to say thank you for all of your years of service on the school board, all of your support. And I've really appreciated your direct approach to things over the years. We definitely always knew what you were thinking. But your support and your, your work on the school board has really helped to school district a better, a better district for our students. Um, I guess I'd also like to thank you for all those vacations you took in the past. Uh, remoting you in was a lot of extra time and effort, but it kind of paid off today in our current pandemic and how we're doing board meetings. And I guess one final note, I was, I was searching through some old texts, looking for what I was going to say, some content maybe, and found plenty of texts asking you if that was your vehicle parked in the fire lane out in front of the high school. Uh, I'm sure it was all official fire department business. Thanks, John.
Hi, John. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your years of service to this district. You have made a long-lasting impact on Columbia Heights Public Schools. You have served the community as a school board member and you have been a staunch supporter of the schools as a parent, community member, and alumni. You have demonstrated an unwavering leadership and integrity on the school board. Over the last several years, there have been so many memorable moments with you, from the Medal of Honor recipients visiting Columbia Heights to the National AP Award, the Alumni of Distinction, seeing your own children growing and thriving in the schools, the bus ride with the new staff around the community, and a few lively school board meetings. You have done all of it and more while remaining true to yourself with that sharp wit and sense of humor. For that, we say congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, John, for everything you've done for the students and families in District 13. We wish you all the best.
John, thank you for your years of service to Columbia Heights Public Schools and to the school board. Thank you also for the confidence you had in me and shall we call it encouragement to run for the board several years ago. I very much appreciate how you fiercely advocate for all of our students, staff, and teachers. One thing that I have learned from you is that every student who walks through our doors is our student and we will give them the best educational experience possible. I wish you the very best on your retirement. And I know that even if you're across the border, you will always be a part of Columbia Heights Public Schools and they will be a part of you. I wish you the very best and thank you again for your years of service.
John, I want to say thank you for your years of dedicated service to the community and kids of Columbia Heights. We are so thankful for you and wish you all the best in what comes next.
That was great. Thanks, guys. John, we're going to let people around the table say, we all got our words in on the video if we wanted to, or had John, uh, we're going to let, uh, people around the table say, we all got our words in, uh, on the video if we wanted to, uh, or had time. Um, but I thought we could open the mic, and then I'll let you say a few things at the end. So, you know, get your farewell speech ready. So. Any, any school board members want to chime in?
Yeah, um, John, I didn't get a chance to put my thing into the presentation, but I just really wanted to say thank you for all of your leadership. I learned so much from you, um, ever since I started several years ago. Um, you're definitely going to leave, you know, a big, a big spot, a big hole where, um, where you were, and we're going to miss you and, um, wish you a happy retirement and stay in touch.
Laura, see, you're not muted. Did you, did you want to say something?
I, I sure do. John, I'm really going to miss you on the board. I'm going to miss your organization with all your little tabs, and I'm going to miss the, oops, did I say that? Are we on camera?
Only a couple times.
It's a swear, yeah, did, you know, sometimes you'd slip one every now and again. So, um, and, um, of course, you're, you're, um, you're, uh, very lengthy. I remember Kathy, um, always saying, keep it short, keep it short, um, at, uh, the convocation. The wearing of the many hats. I remember that one very clearly. Um, and, uh, we really went through some very interesting times over the years, and it's really not going to be the same without you on the board. Um, but enjoy your bike, um, and we're going to really miss those remote locations. You know, when you're halfway around the world, and what time is it there? Um, whenever you came in on the board meetings, um, but thank you so much. We really, I really couldn't have gotten through a couple of those rough years, uh, without your leadership. Good luck.
Thanks, Laura. Molly, I saw you jump in there.
Yeah, I didn't say much on the video, like, um, I, I think I followed the rules a little bit better than maybe another board member. Um, but I think there were some rules around the time limit. In any event, John, just thank you. Um, when I started on the board, your guidance meant the world to me, um, just, you know, your insight. Um, and not just, you know, board member to board member, but also y- your wisdom and your dedication for, for our kids in Columbia Heights. Um, is just so appreciated, and I hope you really walk away from this knowing how deep that goes. It really, um, your leadership over the years and what we've created in this district, and I say we, meaning teachers, you know, every, everybody in the building, administration, school board as a whole, over this last, you know, fifteen years maybe, it, it has been phenomenal to watch, um, and you've been a huge, huge part of that. And so just a huge thank you to you. I know that you'll still be around and you'll still pop up at things, so it's not so much. It's just a matter of when the pandemic is over that we'll see you again, so.
Can I jump in? Just defend myself.
Go ahead, Lauren. Yeah.
Twenty seconds. You said twenty seconds. That was impossible, and I tried. You should have seen the first seven takes, because that was a lot better. Lot more.
Really twenty?
Oh, twenty seconds. No, it was forty-six seconds. I did my best.
Yeah. I don't think it was even twenty, though.
I, I, I'm, you know, I know this moment's about John, but we're, of course, like, true politicians, we're making it about ourselves. Um, so I'm going to say I got mine in a thirteen second. So, and I might be considered verbose by some standards. Um, so, but John, I could have made a thousand funny jokes. Um, it's been a kick, uh, doing this with you. Um, I am thankful for the, um, maybe loving peer pressure from you and Molly to consider getting on the board and the conversations, uh, preceding that and then after, and learning and growing, uh, you know, in a weird lifecycle, weird time for the board, uh, when Howell and I both got on. And so, um, thankful for your leadership, um, guidance mentoring through this last year as board chair. Xena, did you have anything you wanted to add before we turn the mic over to Larkin to have him open his gift?
Yeah, I, that, that was just to open his gift. I had a chance to, to talk with John earlier today, and as Molly mentioned, it's, it's just not goodbye. Well, I know that you're just down the street and only a phone call away, and I expect to see you at events, uh, when we are able to be back in person. And thank you.
But John, if you wouldn't mind opening up that gift, and then we'll let you have your, have the mic.
So much for hoping to just close board topics quickly tonight, I take it?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
I'm going to mute it so the paper's not super long.
Okay. All right, now you can unmute.
I finally let her.
Want to show the camera?
I will. I just, yeah, I'll, yeah, just tell me if you can read it or not, and there's going to be a bit of a glare there. It's got the, obviously, the letter, looks like a roster. Um, school board for the little thing on my sleeve. It says, John Larkin, Columbia School Board, twenty thirteen to twenty twenty, so that's very, very nice. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Don, for putting that together for us.
That's really nice. That's very nice. Thank you. I think I can find, find a spot on my wall for that, so. Um, I honestly had not planned on saying anything, um, much anyway, which I know, Lauren, be quiet. I know that's unusual, but, um, the video was a huge surprise and very appreciated. Um, as I was watching, and I go, okay, you guys got me. Um, that's when people start talking, so. Um, it already has been a ride, and I look forward to the ride down the road, but, um, thank you for all the thank yous. Um, I guess you don't, you don't realize the impact you have until people start really talking about it here like this. It was never my intention to run for school board. Somebody talked me into it several years ago. That's how some of you others kind of got cornered into that as well. I figured at the time, maybe misery would love company, but, um, it's, it was never misery for me. Um, and I have to own the second four years, because the first one I got talked into, but I obviously decided to run again, so. Um, Dan alluded to all the different things that have happened in that tenure, and also in that, those eight years, um, that, they, they weren't because of me. They were because of all of you guys, the collective effort of the board, the staff, and, and everybody that worked super hard to make those things happen now. And if I got to be the face from time to time, and again, so be it, but there are so many other people working so hard, um, to make all those wonderful things happen. Again, Dan listed them. I started writing them down, uh, Chris talked about Denver, um, the AP, and then it just, there's a ton of different things that have happened, very positive things. There's been challenges, no question. Um, but we've survived those challenges. We've come out stronger because of it, and not because of me. Again, because of, of, of the group and, I guess, the continuity of the board that it's been, especially over these past few years. Um, it's been a pleasure working with you guys. Um, it really has. Um, Xena, you, you got, you're, you got the wheel of a great organization here, and I know you're going to do great things. Um, your staff, oh, by the way, Brian, yes, it was official business, um, when I was parked there. And who would have thunk that I was prepping you for the future with my trips having to remote in? So, see, I was, I was, I was ahead of the curve there, so. Um, I, I'm not sure what to say other than thank you. I'm going to miss you guys. Um, it's my time. It was kind of my, my plan was, my kids were in school, my daughter graduated this last June, and I was going to finish it out. So, it, it's, it's working out the way that I intended as far as when it was time, and it's now it's time for you guys to take that and continue the role that we're on. Y- you're working with some very, very difficult times. Um, I'm, sorry, I'm not going to be around, but I'm not. I mean, you have had to make, we've had to make, and you will continue to have to make some difficult decisions. But Molly, you've probably put it as, as, as good as I've heard it is, doing what's in that, just in general, what's in the best interest of the district. And I think we've always tried to do that and respected each other's opinions, and I don't see that changing, so. Um, I wish you guys the best of luck. I got the easy part. I just don't have to give up Tuesday nights anymore, so. Um, that's a good thing for me, but, um, yeah, I don't know. I just, thank you for the recognition. Um, I might have texted Lauren during part of this. I go, really? And I just, that, my first choice, but I was told to shut up and deal with it, so. Um, I'm smiling and I'm appreciative. I am appreciative. I just, not, not big on the recognition piece, so. Um, I'm done talking, so, um, hopefully there's no more board topics, but, uh, thank you, guys. Best of luck. And yes, I'm around. I'm not going anywhere anytime soon.
Awesome. Well, thank you, John. Uh, like, once again, we'll miss you a lot, and in an anticlimactic way. Are there other board topics? I am the queen of transitions tonight.
Yeah, I actually have a board topic, and it's going to be really hard to follow up on it, because I actually forgot I actually attended the delegate assembly for MSBA. I should have brought it up under my board activities, but, uh, needless to say, the last two weeks have been extremely busy. Um, so, uh, anyway, there are, it was a fairly, uh, small, uh, agenda, um, of resolutions that we went over, but probably, uh, the two that, um, that, uh, that had fairly, I mean, pretty, pretty much unanimous support, uh, was, um, under, uh, school finance. And, um, we're looking right now to, um, lobby to, um, hold harmless for pupil counts, because, um, a lot of online schooling, uh, happened, so, uh, across the state, there was a drastic decline in enrollment. And, um, to be able to, uh, continue with contract, um, uh, contract, um, obligations. Um, there, there, we're asking to, um, not have a sudden drop in funding, because there can be some huge shifts, um, so we're really hoping that we can get that carried forward. Um, and then the other one was, uh, for compensatory, um, also to hold harmless for, um, the, let me see the exact reading here. Compensatory, uh, uh, the compensatory financing. Hold on. No, that's, I'm sorry, wrong page. I had it marked out. I don't have the tabs that John has. Um, I should probably invest in those. Uh, the compensatory counts. Um, that's because, um, with this year, with, um, so much online, um, activity, um, that the free and reduced lunch, uh, forms were not getting filled out. Um, so there's a huge drop in that funding. Um, I, I know, um, our district has done a really good job of that, but across the state, um, there's, uh, there's quite a bit less, so it's changing the amount of funding, even though the students still have the need. Um, they're just not filling out the forms. Um, so those were the two, uh, two major, uh, two major, um, legislative, um, initiatives that we'd like to seek. And, uh, uh, we definitely, um, uh, just have it out there. If you have any comments, um, get ahold of your legislature. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much, Laura. Any other board topic? All right, hearing none, I will like to, uh, end this John Larkin's very last school board meeting for Columbia Heights, so meeting adjourned at nine oh four PM.